I think it's the Chair of the Finance Committee is our Chairman and Staff of all places. So, welcome to our meeting. Mary is the Chair of the Select Board.
The Chair of the Select Board will be here shortly.
Well, we're sort of waiting for him. He will start by doing...
I think that's him.
That's what?
That is him.
Did you move me? I got paper from under the table.
So, let's just... Those are just my... Where we take a minute to...
And also, the packets are there. I'll just do everything tonight.
Right. Up here, please. I'll just straighten up as we work our way through. Here's the next... You have a question, Mr. Judge. Okay, the minutes.
I don't think so.
Nancy, you might want to move.
Oh, this thing?
Just got a lot of hair.
It's stuck together.
It doesn't come out that quick, nor can we... How I entertain a motion. We have seven minutes in time.
Sure.
Colin, we're going to check on this minutes in just a moment. Colin, this is your judge. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of this committee's meeting on March 12?
So, move.
So, second? Second. Any discussion?
How is this amendment attached with the actual articles? That's good. Can anyone copy here the actual articles that aren't scribbled up?
Yeah.
Sorry, what was the question?
They want a copy of the actual articles that are listed in these minutes.
Absolutely.
So, if you get a copy of those, because mine are all scribbled up.
And do you want me to email them to you?
That'd be great.
Thanks.
Was that friendly amendment? Any further discussion? There's only two people here in both of the House committees approval.
Can we vote?
Yes. Yes, the committee can approve minutes. Further discussion questions? We haven't acted on it until... Be ready for the vote. All those in favor of approving in March 12 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, not voting. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on March 13.
Two, zero, one, two.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
So, a second? Any discussion, questions?
So, move to March 13 minutes?
Around March 13 minutes, no comments. Be ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair is... The Chair is with a majority vote. A majority vote. I'm voting aye as well.
Okay, so, two of us can vote?
Everyone can vote.
So, two, zero, one?
Two, zero, two. You have noticed that our two committees are not meeting jointly tonight. And that maybe only the Finance Committee are meeting tonight. Would you like to address...
Sure. I've got a short statement here. Members of the Select Board are here tonight as individual citizens. And no deliberations leading to any decision will take place among us. No minutes of the Select Board will be taken tonight, as this is not a properly posted meeting of the Select Board. The Select Board members who are present will refrain from passing any judgments or opinions about the budget requests that come before the Finance Committee tonight. Members will ask questions, as they might do as individuals, to gain a better understanding of such requests or proposals. Any deliberations of the Board will only take place in subsequent properly posted meetings. According to the Attorney General's Open Meeting Log, Item Number Three on Page Six, Members of a public body may attend a meeting of another public body, provided that they communicate only by open participation. However, they cannot deliberate at such gatherings. To the extent that an individual participates by asking or answering any questions, it will be at the sole discretion and recognition of the Chair of tonight's Finance Committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? If not, we'll continue with our meeting with the Finance Committee. I believe that our objectives that we jointly established earlier can easily be attained. We went through this about a little bit when we were on the other side of the fence.
So, what we're doing is passing off the budget proposals that we have...
First, I'm going to just simply bring to the committee's attention our ongoing work with vocational budget. And I know that I have this as information, I have it uploaded via email, and the numbers continue correct as I continue my search for the truth. I think it's... We can now say with accuracy that we have six students currently enrolled at vocational. We have nine students currently enrolled at Franklin Tech. We are informed that there have been four applications submitted, the deadlines, I understand, that is now passed, for vocational admission for next year. We do not know if they will be accepted, if there's a rule, whatever. We also know that we have four students graduating, so it would appear that our vocational enrollment will not increase. I'll have more to report to you later on our progress regarding vocational transportation. This is not going to be simple planning. It's going to take time, but I remain optimistic and confident that we can work together with our companion towns, with the school district, and contract to substantially reduce transportation expense, hopefully this year, and certainly, in my judgment, for next year. That's the information to share with you, and as soon as I have complete concrete information, I'll be putting this into writing and working with Mary to prepare a budget for the FY14 folk program.
And I believe I informed you that the letter did go out from the Select Board to the other towns who are not part of...
Very good. Thank you. Good. I didn't say that this meeting was being recorded, but I have a duty to inform you that it is, and that there are about four recording devices in the room. Thank you, Rick. Bye. A matter of fact, our committee needs to discuss, and I hope that many years will be open in the audience, is that earlier, when the Highway Department made its presentation to us, on our capital replacement plan, we have the matter of the town grader to consider. This has a price tag, at least one price tag, of $285,000. Obviously, this is a sizable amount of money, and we likely wouldn't borrow it. Now, in order for this to happen, I think it's fair to say that there's no way that we can either fit the entire $285 outright expense into the budget, or even the debt service and the debt retirement into the budget this year. I think there is consensus on the part of the legislative folks here and the executive folks here, that this is, if we are to consider that for this year, we are going to need a Proposition Two and a Half debt exclusion vote. Now, the catch is, is that it needs to be wrapped, because it has to be approved in Boston, and the ballots have to be printed. It's going to require an appropriation from the floor, approval from the debt, and it's also going to require passage of the Proposition Two and a Half override by ballot.
No, just the debt exclusion, which is different from raising the levy.
Right. It's a debt exclusion, but it's still a valid question.
It's a valid question. But it's not a two and a half...
It's not a two and a half override, but it's part of the Proposition Two and a Half laws. It's a debt exclusion vote.
Excluded from two and a half.
Right. That expense from the two and a half levy. Now, the Board, I am informed, will need to be taking this up next week. Would you like to speak further to this?
Sure. It will be on the agenda for next Monday's Select Board meeting, to discuss and possibly make a decision about whether or not to put a debt exclusion on the ballot. And it will also be on the Select Board's agenda for the meeting next Wednesday between the two Boards, so that they will have both of those opportunities. And I don't know how that will work out, but they will be talking about it over time.
Is Select Board scheduled to meet on Wednesday, March 27?
They are.
Okay. We, as a Finance Committee, Ted has tentatively posted us without your agenda. This is the meeting date that was sort of the open, in case we needed it to date. We put it in the schedule, but we... So, is it the pleasure of the Finance Committee that we meet within agenda next Wednesday for the purpose of discussing the purchase of the grader and the debt exclusion vote?
And if I may, I think that that meeting, because of the way we brought it up this year, will also be general budget discussion back and forth, what numbers plug in here or there, the...
Well, in order for this request to come before the town meeting, in order for it to go forward, the Select Board has to vote fine. And it's my understanding that the Board will need to take a vote next week and make a decision. And it's also going to be the duty of the Finance Committee to act upon it in the way of recommending our position on the matter to the inhabitants of the town.
Well, they think the Select Board's going to meet the inhabitants' agenda Monday. If we don't meet until Wednesday, then would the Select Board possibly hold off on voting?
Maybe. And I can answer that they may or may not. It will be on both agendas. They will decide their meeting next Monday. It is their decision, so they could do it Monday, or they could do it Wednesday. But in either case, I do now express that their last meeting was that they were being forward, just, you know, back and forth in discussion about...
And we will have a conversation with them, but they won't or not. I would say we put on our agenda for Wednesday and then forward. Okay. I don't think in the afternoon's meeting, the meeting is posted. I will prepare an agenda for Wednesday's meeting.
And I was going to suggest, maybe you and I talk tonight or tomorrow, as acting Chair, we can change that, put in what we know now that wasn't known at the time, that become that original posting.
If I do that, then I'd like to know from my colleagues if there's anything you want placed on the agenda for discussion purposes.
I mean, unless...
Okay. Does... We're going to have also a channel discussion. Very good. You all... Under this?
Yep.
They'll note on the agenda that the Cultural Commission is listed as one of the agenda points, which, when they are not present, and we have no budget request, to my current record.
Some of these carry over year to year, sometimes there is, unless somebody changed their mind and showed up tonight. When I spoke to them earlier about the budget process, they said no.
Said they don't want any money at all?
No, they tend to get their money through, let's say, the rent.
I want to bring to your attention, members, we all should have updated three twenty of the dates that have been left, our budget worksheet. Everyone has a copy, we want to kind of keep that in hand.
May I just say one word about the update? You'll notice under the... In column column, those numbers aren't plugged in, but what I did was put in some of the numbers that Ted mentioned at the last meeting, and in the comments, it says, basically, what that shows is some of the request numbers that can be considered, and then a total that he offered, if the numbers that are in column went that way, as an example of where we might come in on the budget given their assumptions.
This little comment from under Public Safety, that says FC equals RQ.
Right, and that's what I said, that means Finance Committee equals request, meaning the numbers that you see plugged in in that column under Finance Committee Budget, which is the... So, you've got the Department Request, Select Board Budget has nothing in Finance Committee Budget column, has some numbers.
Yeah, and there's three of them there, and it says, so, what you're saying is Finance Committee equals request.
Yes, and this was what Ted, at the last meeting, had chaired, was talking about, some hypotheticals.
Yep.
And so, I put FC equals request, just to mean that it was... Yeah, it's a suggestion that if we did this request, this is how it might look. And so, you'll see at the bottom, there is a total that he had come up with.
It's not saying that that's what we're recommending.
No, it is not. No, and this budget changes every week as we go along, so that might disappear by next time, but...
Next on the agenda is discussing the budget for the Planted Board. We have in front of you a copy of an email from Michael Fitzgerald to Mary, actually, and I'll make it aloud. It says, "The Planted Board would like the following budget: $900 labor plus 2% equals $918. $50 for postage and supplies. This will total $968." Mary, is there anything you would like to add?
Nope, this is... This budget stays pretty stable. Michael said, you know, just the same, he didn't think he'd need to come, but since he is in there, and just wanted to let him know, it's being discussed right now.
Michael, we're talking about you and your absence. You've just read your budget proposal. And would you like to offer any further enlightenment?
Any questions? Mostly, it goes towards having somebody besides a voting board member to answer and keep track of what we said. That's the ninety percent.
And that's the budget.
A little bit of me, I hear once in a while, somebody goes to a workshop, that would try to achieve us.
I have just one on it. I have a suggestion. For me personally, it's real nice to have these little sheets, because they're the same, and it's familiar. Do you think you could put this on one of these?
Sure.
That'd be great.
So, last year was 915, they're asking 968, which is basically 2% of the...
Yeah.
Any questions for Michael, or any questions from the committee here? Thanks for sharing with us, Michael. We have the Zoning Board of Appeals to discuss next, and I am informed from Mary that their budget request is $150.
That's right.
Could you provide any...
And that is, that's the number that goes in pretty much every year, in case they need to advertise.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about the ZBI? Shall we move on? I want to make a comment that one of the items on our agenda is the Website and Technology Committee, and David's call will be coming in at 8 o'clock, and I think once we get to 8 o'clock in one state this year, we're going to move into that discussion at that point. Next, Veterans. Mary, I'd like you to speak to that, please.
And we have not gotten any assessment from the Veterans Council at this point. It may not change. What you see here is under... Human Services, which is Page Three. And the one piece of paper you have is Veterans Benefits Local. The town is responsible for paying benefits to qualifying veterans who live in the town. That is something that can and does change as you go along. You might have no qualified veterans, you might, at some point, in your health line, you might have three. So, this is one of those numbers that certainly could change, but this estimate is based on, as you can see, the current amount that we are paying for that.
Is this... The estimate was derived how? Where did the neuroprestics come from?
The Veteran... I think it's the Veterans Council or that lets us know that. Sorry. I think it's the Department of Veterans Services, Veterans Council, that sends us the invoices for that.
So, that's an estimate, but not an assessment, yeah?
No, the total is an estimate for us, because each veteran who qualifies would have their own calculation, and have family sources. And at any time, you might have one, three, 10, some towns, you know, ended up with many. It's been a discussion amongst towns for a while, because this is something fairly new, only a few years, really, I think, that we've been seeing it.
Two years.
Yep. And so, it's the yearly amount that's an estimate. If the person getting benefits currently moving out of town would go to zero, if two more veterans could move in, they might have a different monthly assessment. But the best we can do at this point, and that's what we did last year, which was the second year, we took over your pay, put that in. Think of maybe a little bit of leeway to all...
I'm not sure. Maybe we just put it in exactly...
Well, the one person we had went from $800 and something dollars a month to $964 this month. So, really, it's just a destiny, month to month to month.
Right.
Okay.
Why do you increase...
You know, in my former life on the Finance Committee years ago, this was being handled by the agent at Sheldon Falls, is that still the place?
No, it's...
Lotus Falls now? Question?
Turn this one. Address the question to Laura, from you.
I beg your pardon?
I'd like to ask Laura a question through the Finance Committee.
Certainly.
About this topic. I thought I recalled, and I just want to double check, that there's a component of this, that the state reimburses some of that money?
That is true, you have to raise appropriate money to disperse before you make that out.
Oh, I know that, but it does, at some point, they send us back some money, or do they send us back 100%? We get 100%, and I know at one point, it could be as much as 18 months, and I think it's shorter than that now, but... And when that comes back, that goes into the general fund base. Thank you.
And any member in the audience is welcome to ask a question, irrespective of the High Office.
I'm sorry, I missed it. That's all right. So, it is Veterans.
Finance Committee, have any common questions, Ms. Loing? Then we'll move on. On the agenda is the Town History Fund. Apparently, we had no contact or budget request coming, am I correct?
Right, I mean, I had a conversation, there is none. I was hoping to call again today, there's sort of a last check, but if we get through that, I will do that, but as far as I know, there is...
Did the town appropriate anything for this project?
Last year, no.
Last year?
And as I say, some of these carry year to year, because occasionally, one of the committees will, you know, pay that for sure.
Okay. Very well. Comments? Questions? Now, move on. I'm going to jump over to the Website and Technology Committee, as we're not ready to go back yet, and I'm going to jump over to the Board of Health, and I see we have some representatives present, and we do have a budget here, if I'm not mistaken, and it will take a minute. Duncan, you are the agent for Board of Health, or are you the Chair? I get confused. Wait, no, that's the one.
On the Chair, not the...
You're the Chair of the Board of Health. Would you like to sum up your budget requests?
I'd put in a little fund budget.
Okay.
Would we have any same questions?
So, no increase, the total line is requested, I'll read it aloud for the benefit of people, $1,350 for wages. There are three stipends for each, and everybody had $450 each. $900 for dues, and the dues are to what, Duncan? Dues?
We belong to the... The mess.
I can't remember the name.
Yeah, I don't remember the name either.
And I should, because I see the community...
And lastly...
The $900 is expensive. Part of it's dues, part of it is if we have to send an animal head into Boston to be checked for rabies, we might have training expenses.
So, this should be corrected to read... So this should be corrected to read operating, operating expenses, dues and other expenses?
I would say so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we should, we certainly have nine hundred dollars worth of dues.
Right. And lastly, Duncan, uh, your board is recommending eight thousand dollars for remuneration for a health agent.
Yes.
Can you tell the committee a little bit about what the health agent does and how that individual interfaces with your committee?
At the moment, we have two health agents. One is Karunelki, who is on the board of health of Dona. And he takes care of our needs, starters title five is concerned. He would check over, uh, septic system designs. He witnesses title five inspections. He witnesses perk tests. And, uh, anything that has to do with, with people's septic systems and title five. That varies from year to year depending on what kind of problems people have, the amount of construction in town, that kind of thing. Claudia Lucas is our agent for everything else. She would take care of, uh, housing inspections, food, vendors inspections, restaurant inspections, that kind of thing. She would be responsible for any disease outbreak investigations. If someone got TB or giardia or that kind of thing, she would investigate that. It's mostly state mandated investigations.
How, how does your board contract with these individuals? Is it built on an hourly basis?
It's on an hourly basis. In the, in the past, we have belonged to the foothills health district and the, uh, FERCog health, uh, agent services. And in those two, we've paid a flat fee. And it didn't make any difference how many hours they put in. If it was less hours than what we were billed for, we'd pay it. And if it were more hours than what we were billed for, we'd pay, we'd pay the same thing. So in effect, at this point, it's almost like being self insured. You really don't know if, if nothing much happens, then we're money ahead. If, uh, we have disease outbreaks, that kind of thing, then we might be coming back to you. Hopefully not.
And would you introduce the members of the board of health? Would you introduce the members of Ashfield's board of health?
Susan Clark is our newest member. Joanna Stossberg is not here. It's only three of us.
Good. Respond to us from each other. Any questions about board of health budget requests? Comments? Straightforward, I think it is. What I, uh, would like to do now is to, uh, jump a step to general government. And proceed with general government. Mary's going to walk us through some of these lines and offer information. Once David calls here, we'll pause, we'll go into technology. And once we get done with technology, we'll continue back to general government and get into the town hall.
So, um, I'm, I'm going to just touch on ones that are general government without specifically being town hall and the town hall employees and specific offices.
Right.
And if there's something to say, I'll say it. But if there are questions, try and answer them. And in some cases, other people here might be answering. So.
We started on page one.
We started, all the general government is on page one. And you'll see some of these are things that we've taken up in other places, like personnel board or appeals board, uh, some of the stipends and so forth. So I can, if there are things that we haven't discussed in the month, that, um, that's fine. Auditor, as most people on the finance committee know, we've been putting aside a ten thousand a year for audits. We recently got a waiver. We were being required to a yearly audit because we have RDA on the highway garage. So we actually go forth, worked on it and we got a waiver so that, um, we can do it every other year. And that's why you see that drop from the ten five to the five thousand. As you know, it says that we have a waiver for FY fourteen. And the idea is to put away half each year instead of putting away the full amount for as long as we do that. Bonds. I think Laura might be able to give you some information on the, better information on that.
Some of us have to be bonded. Treasurer quarters who bonded, town clerk is bonded, twin as the assistant is bonded. All of those are here constantly. Make sure we don't fall away.
Insurance, buildings and liability. I think I told you in the earlier meeting that I had talked to our, um, our Maya representative. And my expectation at that point from the conversation and his expectation was that because of liability, because of the lawsuits, the liability portion of this policy would be increasing. I've left that in because he's going back to check. But in a recent conversation, we went over, it was item by item, and if, I'm sorry, we're going to leave. And that there won't be any increase. But I won't take that off until he gets back with me running the analysis also to see if we have the proper amounts.
Mary, I'd like to back up to the building inspector to see if we're making shift, we're shifting that order to FERCog. But I, the value of appropriation this year is seventeen five. Maybe I missed something pretty dismean.
Sure. I mean, I can explain the history of that. And right, last year that was under general government. This year it's going to go back under the FERCog services. The prior, the year previous to that, it was, um, under FERCog services. The last year was moved to general government because there was a discussion on the select board about possibly bringing that service in town, hiring building inspector or multiple building inspectors. Because you have, um, housing wiring problem. In, in the end, the select board did some investigating, decided not to do it and signed the contract with FERCog in FY thirteen. And we signed the contract with FERCog. We got, the contract has two years stable. It was three after we got it out. But as you can see, uh, the service will be built at six thousand five hundred with a quarter width as we do with their services. And that will probably be all there is from them. I think there's some language in there that says if certain unusual things happen, that could be some increased assessment. I think we haven't actually looked at it, um, a few weeks ago.
What twenty seven, we're not going to be getting necessary.
Well, the seventeen, uh, if we increased one FERCog in FY twelve, the last time we moved that service was more than sixty-five hundred. And I don't remember that, but I can look it up. And have that for you next week. And also when we were looking at bringing those services in town, uh, we budgeted more than what we knew the sixty-five hundred contract would be because it was unclear who we would be able to get, how many different people we might need and so forth.
Um, question? I, I just remember we were, when we were reviewing it last year, year before, I think, I correct me if I'm wrong. But I think some of what we looked at was we thought it was a very expensive thing. We looked at maybe some changes. And when we went to FERCog about that, they, uh, internally were looking at, they were charging us to break it down. Is that what you remember that?
They, they restructured their whole program.
So, you know, a lot of their costs were different. Something like that. So their cost came down to us.
And so from here, we have ended the FERCog service or CCIP. And therefore the difference between the sixty-five hundred that you see us budgeting for FY fourteen and the seventeen five you see us budgeting in FY thirteen, that difference will go back to general government.
Questions? Um, Mary, why don't you continue to walk us through?
Uh, after insurance, buildings, liability, and having a building inspector. Actually, this is just something I didn't get to do today. But my intention is to take special project staffing fund out for FY fourteen.
Take it out?
Take, take, actually take the line out. The line was originally developed as kind of a way to deal with, um, some extra hours and some extra needs.
Do you think I start with the, uh, but I can start with the office and take the business out. It's a different way. Later, SP.
Right. You'll see later when we get to town hall offices, we address it differently. So, um, but in any case, this line, let's say this line may be, of course, a better decision at some point. But it was, um, one could say it's better addressed by having the hours needed in the employee positions. I guess would be one possible way of doing that. Office supplies and expenses. And this, I'm going to turn to Lynn and Laura. And.
I think you should, just looking at the two fiscal years.
Okay. So.
We're not, we're not really sure about this number.
And is that the one where we put a five thousand in there and then it went into the other computer line?
I think what we, what we had talked about, we actually had looked at, um, a lot of the office supplies that come out of the one line item go to many, many different departments, not just what DUI procedures pay offices. And the goal was, I think, to get a better handle on what true budget is for each department. In order to do that, they need to pull it out. And I think that's what we were seeking to achieve with that line item for our offices. What interest do you?
And, and so I will get to a better number, but in some ways it's hard to overlook this number. And it's not unlike what we're going to run into with computers and technology, which is to say, there may be some decisions to be made about which items belong in particular budget or departmental budget and which items should stand as a category of their own. So some of it depends on whether this item is accounting for everyone's office supplies or whether those are in the individual budgets. But I think you're right that that.
It is part of the subaccount here where you not ask confirmed under town hall.
Exactly. Right. There are subaccounts to break these out. I notice I have me combined there. I do believe we put one computer in there for.
Yes.
And so that will probably come out. Again, that may be dependent on some other approaches.
So will we visit this next week?
We will revisit this next week.
Can I also ask a question? The assessors aren't doing their budgets at one time?
Yes.
They, they're asking for a seven point eight percent increase on their salary line item. Are they increasing their hours?
And actually, again, and I apologize to everyone, did not have as much time to go through the comments here today. And that, that's just the salary.
Yeah, it's a seven point eight percent increase.
So I think the salary item doesn't change. I did make a change today on their assessor's expenses, but assessor's perk is as it is.
So she's going to seven point eight percent increase?
And so, right, so I shouldn't have two percent there, so maybe figure that out.
Are they decreasing the hours?
Honestly, I can't remember. Anyone remember? I have to.
Do you know what day we could cut?
One of you could, one of you could play both and ask to grab.
David? I think that that assessor's line was wrong. Remember their spreadsheet, none of the math happened to work, which was a little scary being coming from the assessors. But the math on the spreadsheet they generated and they were supposed to bring this back, but it was cleaned up. And I, I haven't seen it yet.
So maybe please have one more.
That's right. So I'm going to have to work this over.
For our conversation.
All right. They reported outside of the error that the nine sixty-four increase in the assistant clerk line represents a two percent total increase. That's what it says.
So I made a note that's something else.
So what's the total dollar on the salary line?
Well, as Tom indicated, uh, there's some cleaning up of their budget that's necessary. The numbers that they submitted to us were mathematically challenged. Just an industry check.
Most have not been changed.
We're making the note that we're going to have to follow along this.
Yeah, this week, I mean, in preparation for next week's real discussions.
I would like to ask that the, uh, add this to the agenda.
Assessor specific?
Yeah, assessor's budget. Maybe you could get in touch with Sandy.
Oh, yeah, I will. Make sure that this was.
Can we, you know, if we pull that through the town three weeks, we will do that at the beach to go to such a meeting there. That we've had the help of, that they have to do the air.
I think it was probably not mine.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure.
There's just, there's certain things in here.
Oh, yes. I know.
Yeah. And another item on, on the general government. We've got the salaries for the town clerk and the assistant town clerk has a two percent. But I noticed that there's a request for additional hours.
We're going to take that up later.
Shouldn't that be reflected on the department request? No, we're going to, actually, we're going to take the town hall positions afterwards separate from the rest of general government. And as with, and we had this discussion at our last meeting, everybody was asked to submit a level funded budget for that. And pretty much, and we've done this for a couple of years. People get as close to that as they can. They'll bring things around. Sometimes it's a little over, sometimes it's a little under, but it's as close to that as possible because that's the request. We have also for a couple of years have encouraged people to speak to what they feel the real needs of their department are. And then that becomes part of the discussion between boards. And it serves a couple of purposes. One, we start with whatever the directive was. But two, it, one tells us what trade offs we might have to make based on, um, the information from the department, whoever submits the budget. And two also gives us an idea of where things are headed. What some of the challenges are, what some of the trade offs are going forward.
And we will get to that, this in more detail.
And we'll take up the town hall positions as a separate thing under town hall.
Right. So going to be, as we go over general government, we're going to be kind of jumping over staffing related ones for now. And then we'll, we'll take it.
As you see, both general government and town hall are there and that's a good.
I want to, uh, I know at least one member would like more information on office supplies. And had suggested, and if our colleagues agree that I had. and had suggested, and if our colleagues agree that I have this budget as well, if we could detail it on office supplies.
Do you all have, I thought I provided it one time, or you might each have, if not, I would definitely do it next time, the sub-accounts, if you want to look at those.
We would like to look at those.
Okay, so I'll hold it. So wouldn't you put that on the agenda too, the next week, for our meeting? That we get to look at that. So, sub-accounts runs to 64 pages or something, lots of them you probably don't need to see, but we want to identify a few, like office supplies.
Office, operations.
And if you, I mean, I always have it with me, and I can open that right now if you want to look at it. Well, we were just talking about, you know, we're all talking about it, and there was some questions, since we'll be back on it, we might as well put on the next week's agenda. But we do, so...
So you could bring the sub-accounts in for office supplies?
Yes, and...
If I was a bit more...
I think we could give you one out of now.
Okay, that works.
I was just going to turn to Lynn, because Lynn does a lot of the ordering and managing of office supplies and expenses, and I have that here too, Lynn, if you want. Okay, this is one of it. Right, and so if we're looking at office supplies and expenses, it's mostly, we do a lot of the, mostly when we need our paper, pens, folders, file, in cartridges, that sort of thing. Do you think some of those are computers and...
No.
Not computers specifically, but any things that might have to do, like I think if we ordered a monitor that way, separately than we needed one?
Is there confusion, is it confusion for the 5650 jumping up to 1050?
Right, we already said that number is not right, and I combined it at one point, thinking that... But all I was asking is if we can see what is right next week on the agenda. Absolutely. Okay.
We want to walk that.
Next week is on, and maybe time to do at least that week. Right, so we're, this is town hall maintenance, and then office supplies, right, so the office supplies is up to being the number you saw before, I have recombined here, I think I put a computer in there, we were talking about we're going to need a computer.
Mary, do you think it'd be easier if we could just take a look at it next week?
Sure, but I can just tell you that FY13, the final budget was $4,900.
I think we'll take this up next week.
Can I just say one thing about that, though? Wouldn't any hardware purchases be under the IT budget, the tech budget?
Well, yes, I mean, no, going forward, that's all maybe up for being changed. We just got your letter today suggesting a different approach. But previously, a lot of that has occurred in lines within various departments' budgets.
Right.
So, and what Ling just brought me here, we'll skip down to town hall maintenance, so you know, town hall maintenance is electric, heat, water, telephone.
Well, we can just have copies of those. Town hall maintenance was way down.
Well, let me just finish reading the list if I may, payroll, supplies, postage, computer internet, and maintenance, that's what's comprised that line as you see it now. Again, some of these may change going forward, depending on whether we want to take certain things out and put them in a different category, and that would be new this year. Certain proposals are excluded. And so that applies, again, postage, there has been a question about whether the postage is just for these town hall offices, does also get used a little bit by others, but is mostly, well, all right, and forgive me, can you remember, I did increase this here based on early conversations where we were combining postage?
Right, I did, when you office supply positions, because you extracted it out of the sub-account to effect what it truly was, and if you look further down, you've decreased it accordingly, so I think it matches in a perfect way. With this posted, as confirmed, there's certain things that I have to spend to all of us, which requires a strict listing, it's very fixed, and that cost always increases, the stamps increase, and so it's pulled from its own line item, and the collector treasurer has the same things under collector treasurer that go out on a cycle basis, and so we can pull those into a different account under us, but you can see that's where you're spending the money. But do you need other postage? Absolutely, you do, I mean, obviously, and that's what that's, so I think that's where we started.
And Mary, if town history doesn't have a lot, so you need a post, you may have some other...
And again, as we look at, this is what we've discovered, is we look at, you know, remember, town hall has sort of changed in its formation almost every year, to some degree too, and so sometimes things were in a digital line, sometimes they were in a group line, sometimes we found that it made sense to...
We're trying to get a true cost of what each department, what the expenses of each department, so that we could more intelligent look at it, and go, oh, okay, that's what that is, than the love some fact, which works, but really, won't we see what happens?
So, for example, there is no executive administrator expenses? Possibly there should be, and that's...
Is there any place that we can look at for suggestions on how to divide it to get it accurate review?
Well, we have the accurate review, and I can actually, you may have all the full 64 pages of sub-accounts. You know, it's only here, we're always looking at it, in some ways, it is a decision about, is it better to have one supplies account, but then nobody in particular is controlling an individual department's use of it, or is it better to have it broken up?
Well, and I can imagine, one issue would be, is if you separate it to a bunch of different groups, and then one person runs over, and they need to borrow, that conversation where one grouping, you kind of have that flex to...
Which is why it's kind of in progress, and it's always a decision to look at, and with computers, you'll see the same thing. Even a few months ago, we were looking at computers one way, and now we're possibly looking at them in a different way, which is combining all town, computer IT needs and line. So, David and I spoke this afternoon about whether to make a line for the technical recommendations yet, and we decided not yet, because depending on how people felt about going forward with some recommendations, not others, money might come out of other lines, because it would be put into that line.
Which actually brings us to that, it's eight o'clock, David Culpey's not yet here, but I see some other checkings out in the audience, and what I would like to ask the members to do is to take this communication to every path it's, actually, emailed from David Culpey.
Is he still doing it tonight?
What's up?
Is David still doing it tonight?
He's still doing it.
What?
In any moment, I believe, you might know.
Yeah, it would be good.
But I think it would make sense we read this first, before we discuss.
And it just came in this afternoon, so...
It just came in this afternoon, so this is hot off the first...
That was the best we could do.
Okay, I mean, I guess I would prefer to keep going to what we're going on, but David should...
We're pretty much done with general government, right?
One or two quick things, and I can just run over them quickly, legal expenses, we know we've all talked about that, that it was 15 last year, because there were some deductibles in there, we have it at seven for FY14, when it gets to looking at the budget overall, we might want to have a conversation about that, again, that's an estimate, and depends, as we do in this year, very much on what happens, and what, how much you do by screen.
Wasn't that also a case of, wasn't there an extra payment that we made last year to catch us up?
Is that anything audited, do you think that was a legal line? I think it audited, it would have been a little extra, because the bill had been a little higher, how was audited, the bill had been a little over what we had the year before, and so it would have been more, and, but, so again, legal line was, last year, if you take out what we knew was going to be the third, what do you call it, legal payment, basically.
Deductible.
Deductible, thank you, it would have been $5,000, so we raised it to $7,000, but as you know, our bill this year will be much more than that, so that'll be a discussion.
Didn't we just have three articles on our special town meeting?
We did, yep.
Having to do with legal expenses.
Right, and that is what I'm saying about, I put this number in a while ago, actually raising it from what it was last year without the deductible, it may need to be looked at and raised more than this, or not.
Yeah, I'm thinking that all the complaints that seem to be coming, that's an underestimate.
Yeah, but then we take, the special town meeting, we took money to cover those.
Yeah, we did.
Right, but so for instance...
Have it covered, instead of telling them to have a special town meeting with more money?
I am recommending that we would probably need to discuss, you would probably need to discuss this again for FY14, if it went the way FY13 has gone, the seven would not be enough.
Yeah. We kind of discussed the legal expenses, laws, utilities.
And so we touched on town hall maintenance, and what's in there.
Any objections, I'll add to the agenda for this group.
Although, here's, I guess my sense is that the agenda will be posted for general budget discussions as deliberations, and I think that will cover everything in here of what we want to talk about.
Do we just need to make notes to figure that out?
And then tax title, I think we addressed that earlier, that Laurie felt that you don't need.
No, because I can carry over my line as year to year, so I'll set that. No one will want to do it either.
Okay, can you explain that a little bit more?
You mean tax title or my line item? Right now, there is, it is on 2007, and I don't know how much you guys took out my line item last month, at special town meeting. It was $20,089, you took how much?
And...
And you took about seven.
So there's about $15,000 left in the line item, which I can carry forward, because it's ongoing litigation, so I'll use the $13,000 being like FY14.
Okay, so then we can probably expect it to jump back up to $7,500.
After we spend a lot.
Okay, so it's just a one-line reader?
Yes.
I'm just looking at Article 7, and it's $74,000 from tax title response.
I figured I'd shoot high, but yeah, I didn't dig it up, so.
And I didn't try to answer them, that makes sense.
Anything more from this committee on general government lines? Now, let me ask the committee what you want to do, we have two items remaining on the agenda, both will take, you know, a certain amount of discussion, one is information technology, the technology committee, or IT agents, the other item on the agenda is to get into town hall staffing and operations, which we jumped over.
I don't know that he is definitely coming, do you?
He said he was going to come and be here at eight, now that was the last I heard, I found an email from him this afternoon.
But something...
I guess, would you want to move on without him, or do you want to, for us to move on in the budget and come back to that one?
There's three people from the technology committee here, speaking for myself, I can't elaborate beyond what his email said. Andy O'Brien, do you think, feel like you could answer questions?
I would prefer it was here.
I would say I'd favor David to be here, then we move on to the town hall.
And as chair, I'll make a decision as to when we interrupt for technology, we may go through all of the town hall as a courtesy to our staff. Okay, I'd like to ask Mary to make some opening comments on this, and for the benefit of all, to just give us a cook's tour around the hall, and who's on first, who's on second, and so forth.
The one thing that is new that you have in your folder is what you see on the budget worksheet is what we plugged in based on 2% and the current situation, you'll see that you also have a sheet that is, requests, recommendations for the town hall positions based on our experience and our assessment of the workload and the time that is put in.
So you're referring to this report, right?
I am.
Okay.
And...
Does everybody have that in front of them?
So, in terms of who's present here tonight to speak to the positions, assistant municipal clerk is Lynn Taylor, town clerk is Ann Dunn, I'm, right, that's given, executive administrator, and Laura, basically, is treasurer collector. I've put it this way, because of course it's positions, but the people who are in the positions, and that we work and have an idea of what's involved, and what is required, are here to speak to that as well, and then, I will just say, generally, as you can see by the additional request recommendation, I think that we are all in agreement, with the exception of treasurer collector, that it is not really possible to meet the expectations for the work that needs to get done in the office, whether it be from the select board or the finance committee, the need for the degree to which we operate with a huge amount of volunteer labor, but that needs backup as well, and then you have the state requirements, the federal requirements, there is a lot that comes in that doesn't actually even come to meetings, it is just the work of keeping a $4 million operation going, all its employees, and all the attendant requirements, and of course, municipal requirements, I would say are more onerous even than business requirements, we end up dealing with a lot of agencies, a lot of statutory, a lot of oversight at different levels, or reporting requirements and so forth, so, would you like to take it, position by position?
Yes.
And why don't we start with you?
When we, first of all, I want to say that I love my job, and I love working, and love doing what I do, but when I'm speaking of, of looking for a slice of the pie, which I know everyone in every department is looking for, I'm going to ignore that and pretend that the only piece of pie that's truly important is our business, and we've never collectively as a group, spoken as a group in relation to what it is, how we work together, and how our positions stand alone, and I believe this is the first time that I know that the four of us have come to a meeting to address that, and it's not to say, oh, poor us, and we feel that we need more, but it's proven to us to let you know that while we are doing jobs, we are doing more hours in certain places to get the job done, and you just need to be aware of that, and what you do with it, is, you know, and think about that aspect of it. So, two pieces of that I would speak to is the town clerk and the assistant municipal clerk, which I am responsible for that position, and we have new job descriptions, spoke to the reorganization of our offices, that has happened over the last... happened over the last few years, which is moving forward and really has made a huge difference, and a lot of effort within to, thinking of the job descriptions in relation to what the needs of the office is and the public, and getting the administration part done. And I think this is a perfect opportunity to take that and be even more proactive and take key to those positions, that which seems to be moving out with other folks doing little pieces of the pie here, and the special projects line item was a great bonus in allowing us to do that, but the things about that that I believe is not giving you the true picture of what it takes to get our work done, which those positions are really part of, which barely says why it can increase in hours. And as Town Clerk, I work more hours than 25 hours a week, and I truly appreciate boards and committees who work with maybe cycles, maybe not for hours. Now I understand all the volunteer hours, but, and I've calculated hours over, over 30 weeks, and consider, over the last 30 weeks where I work on average 3.2, 3.5 hours extra per week. And it's not every week, and it is, has a spike because my position as Town Clerk and Mary's, to meet mass general law, town laws, and then the needs of the town and of our public, and offering a service to the public, which we all addressed and talked about in the last few years, has been extremely important. And you have people who care about coming into town law and taking time over something that we may deem as not really truly constructive, but is very important to the townspeople. And we can't, we, that we have to factor in because that's how long is a piece of string? I have things that I'm thinking of I want to do in my day, but you have to, public hours are a very important part of that. So just as my Town Clerk position, I am working more hours than the 25, that's why I propose to go to 30, that will leverage out over one year and then actually over four years as the cycles of elections that really make a difference. So regardless of whether I have paid hours or public hours, there's needs that I have to meet, and therefore I do them. And, so that's one piece. And then with the Assistant Municipal Clerk position and the job description that matches that, there's a lot of things that, and I know we do not match, um, a job description to a person, but we have a very capable person in Lynn in that position right now. And it's held at 13 hours, which is non-benefit, which really upsets me because I really truly believe that we're not using the resources as we should, and recognizing that work still has to be done, and if Lynn is working extra hours, pulling it out to the special projects line item, we're not truly reflecting what that job is within the office, and therefore, you know, we're preventing as a position from being what it should be in terms of hours, and, which also recognizes benefits. And I think that's the part that's really important. And there's a lot of administration that can take that job description to a new level to, as a team, as the four of us have individual responsibilities, but as a team, we work together, and that you're not going elsewhere for pieces of the pie to be done, that it actually is our responsibility to make it happen. And I think that we have a team that can do that. And that's why I speak to the increases in our two line items.
Questions, questions for you?
I was looking at this, this right up here, and it has the Assistant Municipal Clerk. Everybody's got 30 hours.
That's a new recommendation.
Recommending. Everybody has 30 hours.
And you'll see it also says what the current is.
So, yep, I see that. That was great, great paperwork, too. But the only one that has plus benefits and retirement as applicable is the one position.
That's because Lynn is now at 19 hours. When you go to 20 hours, it's at 19 hours because when you go to 20 hours, which everybody else is at or above-
Well, so the others are already in there.
That's right. Okay, okay, sorry, thank you. Okay.
In that particular case, as long as, as husband and elder, there may not be private department, there'd be no benefits.
I put it as applicable because in fact, benefits and retirement do not apply to many of us who might take them, but who always will be the bad.
They're still at the age there. Whereas once you're winning 30 hours-
Absolutely. Everyone talking about the physicians, not the people.
Absolutely, right.
Because people can always change.
That's right. I under, I understand that, but, but we are looking at what we have right now, and yes, the people can definitely change, but the operations still have to continue.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, we have to look at it as-
Oh, well, benefits and expenses.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why it's there. If you're asking what are the true costs right now, that's a different question.
Yeah, well, that's what my question was, why is that one having plus benefits? Because the others are already in there.
Right. So for instance, any position you look at, you could say, what are the true costs if you include, and in some cases you would have those things included, in other cases you wouldn't, and that's true.
Well, I have to say, and it's kind of just an age-old thing with me, and it may be just my own issue, but I think that when we, when I as a finance committee member look at increases-
Yes.
I need to know what the job description is and what actually everybody does in the day.
Correct.
And I don't think that we've seen that. And it would really be helpful, I think, as, from, for an understanding, because I can hear you on a general basis, I can see what happens when they come in, but having really, a, a list, like a two-week timesheet of what you did in the day would really give us a better understanding of what happens in town hall.
I can, I can do that.
It actually wouldn't give you a better understanding.
I know, I understand the changes, I totally know, and I, you know, done it for the day.
Just say, you have job descriptions.
But I really think that it would be helpful, knowing because it's not really a lot different than we asked from other people when they come in, like, what are you doing, and, you know, what's changed?
That's, that's perfectly-
What, what's in there, and just to have the knowledge of that is really helpful, especially when big increases are-
But that's a perfectly reasonable question, and we can certainly, I do have that in rough draft, and I will create it so it's more logical. For the Town Clerk position, I march to mass general law first, regardless of whatever the town may or may not, you know, choose to fund, and that, as you all know, the state makes, continues to add mandates that are unfunded, and it's thrown at usually your Town Clerk, because every town has to have a Town Clerk, and so therefore you're given ethics of, you know, two prime examples. You're not given the resources to do that, you're not given the tools to do that, but it has to be done, and it has to be squeezed into what you're existing out. That's just an example, but I can absolutely provide that and provide what we see collectively as a team, that I, I don't want to speak for Mary, right? But of, the nuts and bolts of what it means to the job is right now, the, which we have a sense of the administration part, and we can certainly provide that for you. That's not a big deal.
Great. I have another question, because I'm just kind of getting back after two weeks, so I'm sorry if I don't, you know, maybe this was brought up before, and it's a little off topic, but I think it has something to do with this, going back to the open meeting law violation things and other violations that have been, that a lot of paperwork has to be done. I just have the question, why can't that be done on a disk? Why can't that be done electronically without the use of paper?
What, what part?
If somebody asks for records, why can't they be given to the person electronically?
Well, most of the records are-
But for most of the requests, couldn't they be given to, to whoever asks for them electronically?
If, if you have them in an electronic format, you may be able to do that. If you do not, you, you have no obligation to actually create an electronic format, if you provide it for them.
Could you just tell me, what kind of things would the town not have in electronic form that are asked for? Because I'm not quite understanding. I want to see the whole picture.
Um, you need to know what the city, because I'm not sure what it is truly-
So if requests come from somebody, what kind of information wouldn't be had by the town in electronic, or had by the town in electronic forms? What would have to be done on paper? It can't be done on paper.
Well, there's two things. You, you can have all of your minutes in a read format for the select board and for every board and committee. However, you are required by public records law to have them as a hard copy. And so I get two pieces of that, where you, if it's obviously online, it's easy to provide that online, if it's obviously on your computers, absolutely easy to provide that and email that to someone. A lot of people don't have di, have dial-upers or not, don't have computers, not accessible, and therefore you're providing a hard copy of that for us.
And also we've had some oversized things that would have required, uh-
Always, for many things. Many things that I don't have on my computer, I don't have them in either-
And sometimes compilations of things that are a mix of things, so you'd have to create an entirely new document.
Create a full-time document.
Materials from old files and all sorts of things, to things that are in books and the other. Where you have to create a document, and our understanding is equal.
And, and I can imagine, like, our minutes could put in the booklets in there, there's a name.
There's no electronic.
There's no electronic copy of that, so that would have to be much easier to do, just a hard copy, I would imagine, of that record.
Except that our minutes are all done electronically.
Yeah, but we always print out the final copy, make the changes to it.
But we still have the electronic copy also.
But if you make changes to it and I just-
That's under pressure.
Put it in. It's under pressure, here, just they don't, they don't necessarily have access to the electronic.
They don't, right. This could segue.
Right. Because you're looking at two things, I mean, you can do, and as you just mentioned, you can, you need to keep your hard copy, which is what is approved by your committee, as a hard copy in your file, which is here. And you may have your same version, obviously, that you have on the website, which may be available. But if you're looking at something that's 20 years old, that's not on the website, and that's not an unreasonable request for someone to ask and say, I need to look back at select board minutes for the last 20 years. They're handwritten, they're bound in a book. So you, but you, you have to sit and look back.
Many of the things that we've had as part of requests have been in old files, we have to go through old files.
Is that what you're referring to, or I'm not too sure that we're-
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just not sure why in this electronic age, we can't do this electronically. We're not there yet.
No, but who do you have to get off? I'm creating minutes or creating more minutes.
Well, but it seems, I don't, I'm just trying to get an overall picture of how it works, because it just seems that they could all, and they could install on their computer, I said it would be a lot easier.
Minutes, no, it's- It would be easier, but we aren't there yet.
Well, basically, how much time, I'm curious, is that how much time of these hours are you, I mean, Assistant Municipal Clerk, the Town Clerk, the Executive Administrator putting on these, you know, taking away from our regular town?
Well, I think we're doing that in a niche where I don't want to be too, because I don't want it to seem as if suddenly 50% of our day is taken up with one little piece, but it could, and over the past 12 months it has, but that still means the rest of your job has to be done, yeah?
And I, I guess I would say that these hours do not reflect an assumption of, well, what has been happening will continue to happen. This is where we were, in any case, in terms of the workload that has to be done.
Right.
Either cyclically or regular.
Well, that brings me back, you know, that goes back to the original question of if you could show us, just, you know.
We went from a town administrator when they first started at 30 hours, to a gray at 40, to now 25. So we went backwards.
But how many people were there at the time running the office?
My, the same amount.
Four people?
Correct.
And another thing we've talked about when it comes to the executive administrator position and the Town Clerk position, is that once you reach a certain point where you may make that salary, that is something that can be considered, so that you have some flexibility. Right now, some of us are caught in a situation that if you need to do, if you want to do the work that you need to do, or the people are expecting, or people say you need to do this, and it's legitimate, you have a choice between working over hours that have been appointed, or walking out without the work being done, and all that that involves.
But just because somebody has 30 hours a week doesn't mean they're on salary.
It doesn't. All I said is that that's a discussion that we can also have with some of these positions because that gives you some flexibility.
Well, just to keep us on task, colleagues, we're, we're looking, we're looking at a two-dimensional pitch here, one which addresses hours, an increase for three of the positions in authorized hours, the second which is to modify or bring a more aggressive way to pay. And I wanted to ask you, Mary, are all four positions right in the family retirement system?
So right now, we are.
We are.
Now, and the time to get vested is about to change, or has changed, is that right now, my turn?
Was it your plan to, to have others speak, or?
Well, and let me, let me just address a couple of other things quickly, which is job descriptions. I have not brought, in any of the three years I've been in the budget, I have not brought job descriptions to these meetings. This is the first time it's coming up. We have talked ourselves about the fact that job descriptions have been developed over and over, without any real conversation with the people doing the work. And that at some point, probably all of these job descriptions should be revisited, involving the people who are there day to day, who know what the departments are, and then decisions can get made by the committees that are in charge of that. But we also decided that this was not the time to be getting to the weeds of the job descriptions, as with other departments. This was a time to talk about, one, here is our level funded budget, and two, this is what we are experiencing, regardless of, you know, current circumstances.
Yes.
Just one question. Your treasure collector, although it says no change, is it correct to interpret that as no change in hours, but yes, the 2%, as opposed to no salary change?
Right, and that's in this side of the budget. That's in the worksheet, the level funded.
Right, but the others had, so I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't-
I only, I only did it with Town Clerk to show that that was not an increase in the pay rate, that was just the 2%, because I broke that out.
Right. So no change here and there, so I just wanted to double check.
You can also refer to the spreadsheet for what the level funded is with 2%.
So, so do we, I, I just haven't seen any other job descriptions, unless I've, what do you have there?
No.
Uh? Do we have, so we have no town descriptions for jobs in town?
There are.
There are? Oh, sorry.
Yes, you do.
We do, okay.
I'm your representative on the select board, personnel board, so from the personnel board side, over the past three years possibly, the job description, they did one for you at the time you came in, there was one done for the time of hiring Lynn, there was one done that was just Phil in the fall, or executive administrator, I don't recall, there probably is one, but I don't recall seeing one that's been brought up to date for the treasure collector.
And what about, what about the rest of the departments in town? Do we have that as a whole palette?
Um, there are some I'm aware of. The personnel board is working on the personnel policies at this time, and the next thing to take on is to go back to make sure that there are job descriptions for everybody and work to bring them up to date. I mean, that could change if one is different, but there is that.
And maybe that's something we should address the select board next week, whether there are-
I have copies of all current ones, which really does cover most of everybody in town.
Oh, so everybody in town does have a job description?
But some of them may be older.
Right.
Oh.
Every business-
Yes.
And when it comes to town hall offices, I guess the other thing I would say is that the town hall offices have undergone, um, job structure changes over the last few years, and so it's been a learning experience and continues to be one.
So we do have job descriptions?
When we were developing-
Like, yeah.
When we were developing the website, we asked every committee to send us a description of what the committee's mission and responsibilities were, and some responded and many didn't, and- some responded and many didn't. And I think this is exactly the kind of thing that would be valuable to have in the public eye on the website, consistent across all the committees. Similarly, we beat ourselves black and blue trying to get all the committees to post their meetings on the website and to submit their minutes.
But you were talking about employees specifically.
Right. But I'm just saying that in the interest of making all this process of gathering this time-consuming material more efficient and electronic, I think the website can play a role. And what we're going to talk about with the budget and document management can also play a big role.
Thank you. Laura, how many hours total a week are you?
35.
And how's the break between treasurer and collector?
20 for collector, 20 for treasurer.
And are you staying on 35 hours, or are you working?
Okay.
Okay. You're not currently working over here, able to complete the job, but...
Although, just to revisit, that was what this special projects line first came up about, Laura had come a couple of years ago, tasked for an assistant...
Treasurer.
For treasurer. And rather than do that, the board at that time decided to put some money aside for someone else to do some of the tasks at certain times of the year where there's more than can be done. And I think you've said that's worked.
Absolutely. Great. Without it, I would be asking for more. When does yours help?
However, we do have this structural problem that we have Lynn at 19 hours. And then if we use the assistant time that is needed, that's something else in a different place. And that we probably want to clean that up.
Currently, three of these positions are eligible for 32B insurance, right? Health and accident insurances. Say that again?
Yeah, 32B.
The town health and accident insurance, group insurance?
All benefited positions are eligible, though they may or may not be.
She's not, let's use it.
Well, even the bar, even Lynn's out.
No, the three.
She's not 20 yet.
Right, she's not 20, so she's not able to... Lynn, is there anything you wanted to add to this dialogue?
Oh, come on.
The one thing I would like to say about Lynn's position is that she is very capable, really, in assisting in all three other very specific positions, as well as dealing with what public hours she has done available for, which is almost all.
She's taking all my work away, which is great. I won't be interrupted. She can do it.
Okay. I think the information that we needed to get, we have gotten. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further comments or questions? Did you guys have any further comments or questions?
25 hours is not enough, even if you took away extraordinary circumstances from your job. I took it not knowing. I was told by many people that I would find out that was the case, and that's absolutely the case. We're telling it comes on volunteers. Volunteers need someone in the office to do certain things at certain times, or to be a case or two days, or to connect with town council, to provide certain resources. We get a huge amount of our volunteer boards and committees. But there needs to be some coordination there of various kinds. We can spend a lot of time talking about details, but that is the case. There is working with the select board through the budget season. And then, again, we have a $4 million budget, and it involves lots of contracts, it involves suppliers. Some of that Lynn works on, voucher, payment vouchers and so forth. A lot of that falls in the administrator position. Again, town clerk's duties and responsibilities are highly defined as are clerk and treasurer. And your administrator ends up sort of being the person who catches what isn't there. Although I have to say, because there isn't really enough time as it's currently structured, I know that it falls on everyone else in the office as well.
The raises, the hourly rates are more than 2%.
Exactly. And there was, there was a, we have always talked about...
Is that bringing it up to a certain level?
We have always talked about what our people want is...
Two. Mine is not. Only.
Right. Now, as a town clerk is just...
And 3%.
Treasurer, there is no change. Assistant municipal clerk is currently being paid 1275 an hour. And...
How did you come up with the 16 on that?
Because we know the work that she gets done, the amount of...
Is that comparable to other towns?
And looking at what he is probably, not necessarily comparable, but close, or closer.
Is that the same with...
And the same with executive administrator. That would range greatly, as you know.
I know that when I came on board the finance committee, we were at a time when we were taking money away from everybody and everything, you know. So I just want to make sure that you guys came up with an hourly wage that is comparable to what is in the area, in those kind of positions.
And it's not, it's not tied to what other people in those positions are being paid necessarily, but it's getting closer. And it also, I know in my case, has something to do with, again, the position, not the person in it. If you were to go out and try to find someone to do this job, what might you have to pay at minimum to get, as we know from looking at towns around us, towns can get into a great deal of trouble and a large amount of expense when some of these things don't work, or you want to, I would assume, tailor the job such that you could attract the right person, the right skills, you don't always know. But...
And I'll let you go next.
I think the way to argue, other planners, and they're fairly consistent, but the other part that is more important is continuity and longevity in terms of your staff. And I know we've spoken about what they take and all switch and change. They can. But I think that if we don't speak to the reality of some positions in town that don't have any responsibilities, that are earning more than $16 an hour, it's a poor reflection on us if we don't actually recognize that and go in and what are we doing?
And I'd like to add that it's also compared to other people's salary jobs within the town. If we look at the highway department and see what jobs, what hourly wages the highway department is getting, it's probably a lot more than an office staff is getting.
I don't look at that, but you could be right.
And, do you have that?
Well, right now, they're earning $17.91. That's a highway labor.
So, you know, it kind of looks as though what we give out to you the most, and why is one person getting more, why is somebody who's cleaning up at the library getting more than somebody who's working in the town hall? So...
And you can look at the library cleaning person's salary, $16.65.
Cleaning worker?
Yeah.
There's another one.
There you go. The county cleaning person makes $12.11. So I think, I think, you know, I just want to add to this before we move to something else, because I know that, you know, I've spent a lot of hours in those offices, and I think that what we do is phenomenal. I just think that if we had a little bit more recorded, it would help us move forward, you know, with the decisions that we have to make, with justifying the, you know...
Understand.
Yeah.
And I appreciate this, you know, coming with this additional request.
Right.
Which, you know, we asked out of that, right? And then, and just one more question for, you know, informational purposes. If we can't, if we couldn't get both of them in there, would you rather have the paid increase is more important versus the hours? If we had it, if it was...
That's a difficult question to answer, obviously. But the piece that we're constantly juggling is you're looking at providing a service to the public, which is extremely important to us to do that, and also to the public, and also the job needs to get done. So somewhere you're going to have to, we would have, something would have to be, we need to...
In the interest of the agenda, unless there are some pressing questions, or further questions, we may go after, move on.
Let's do it.
We had good conversations, we thank, before that. David Colt, I want to turn the over. Go on, ask me a question. I have read the report from your committee, signed by you, that you sent to the town office. My colleagues have not. You have read it?
I haven't.
Would you mind, we took four minutes to get everybody up to speed, and then we'll David, thanks for the patience with us. Could you, before you move forward in your presentation, just inform us a little meeting particular, as I gather, what the technology committee is, what the charge of the committee is, who the members are, and then we'd like to hear all about this.
The technology committee was formed about a month ago. The telecommunications committee and the website committee were dissolved, and a new committee was formed. We have a formal mission statement approved by the select board. I could pull it up, because I've been generally...
In a nutshell?
I'm sorry.
In a nutshell, our task is to advocate for telecommunications connectivity in the
town, to support the town in its, in advising and supporting the town in its needs for the website and other IT-related issues, particularly in town hall, and third, to advise the municipal light plant, which serves as the town's, serves, municipal light plant is the entity which the town established, and that is part of the municipal cooperative. And the communications committee is a connection to that group. So then, essentially, it provides a connection with wireless, which the town is a part of.
And the members of the committee are?
Members of the committee are myself, I'm David Colt, Philip Schrod, Andy Smith, Juliette Jacobson, Brian Clark, and Chris Gray.
Thank you. Well, you want to spend some money here, I see.
Well, I think most of this money is, well, yes, of course. We, the first issue is the website, which is a contract that we have with a consultant, and we've had a relationship with him for several years. And it's the committee's opinion that we should, the town should continue with that agreement with him, and that his annual fee is an excellent bargain, that we probably get more of his time than the 20 hours essentially that are recognized by that $900. And so, and while there are great opportunities for improvement with our website, he does a reasonable job in being responsive to the basic management of the website as a web master, and has been amenable to various moderate changes.
And he also, as he does this for several towns, it's part of his sort of business model that he regularly updates the software that this website is run on. So there are enhancements that come along that we, that we get as he does this for all of his clients.
Our other options, I don't think it's probably prudent for us to get into the detailed discussion of the website. There's a lot of different areas for improvement. We could do a lot of different things, but they all would cost a lot more money.
And I think also a lot of the improvements that we would like to do, and this is part of what our committee is going to be taking up, can be done by our committee. They're not necessarily technical improvements. They're more organizational design, getting content updated, getting more content into it, that kind of thing. That's really, doesn't, isn't reflected in that $900 service contract. That's volunteer work from our committee members.
Can I ask a question? Is the right time for this question? Is it possible, because we were talking about minutes and other such things to be put on the website, is it possible for your committee to make electronic templates that everybody can use for minutes all across the board for all committees and boards?
Yeah, I hope so. I mean, what we have now is a PDF that people can download and fill out.
Right. But I'm thinking more things to do with the website to just have all the things filled in, you know, attended. What time did you start? What time, and one, two, three, four. And then someone could just take that and work right off of it, and it would be $100.
It's definitely possible that we could improve the process by providing a template. But my understanding is that it would not solve some of the problems, which are that the minutes apparently should also include any other documents that are submitted as part of a meeting. So if somebody provides a letter, for example, or a document that would need to be scanned, for example, included, which most people don't have the facility or ability to do. In addition, it's common, my understanding is, that minutes are often approved, and they are often edited by hand at the time they're among, by the committee. And those would then have to be, again, edited or scanned. So while the template can certainly help, it doesn't solve a lot of the problems of making it electronic. I think if the town had a very strict policy that said all minutes that were, all minutes that are submitted also needed to be scanned or otherwise encoded electronically, I think that would be an excellent decision. We'd need to make sure we had the sufficient resources to make sure that happened.
Right. Because now it's optional. And so, you know, we're trying to walk a line between making it easy to use, because people are so averse to using technology, and making it more fully functional. And, you know, that's a delicate balance. And even now, as I alluded to earlier, it's so difficult to get people to use the website. It would be nice if it were more mandatory. Anyway, that's probably not a budget discussion. Anyway, that's probably not a budget discussion, but something that we're thinking about and would like to talk about.
Well, in some ways, it's a budget discussion, because in my brain, it would, it might cut down later on, on the, you know, later end of it, for people who wanna look things up, all they have to do is go to the computer rather than even come to the office to answer.
Yeah, well, you know, I went on the computer, the website today, to find out when this meeting was, and the finance committee does not post their meetings on the website, so I couldn't find out.
The legal posting board is up front. We have had conversations in the past about why it needs to stay there for now, how to do that. Much of the town, remember, we run with a lot of volunteer labor on our committee superpowers, not everyone is computer literate, not everyone has the kind of connectivity that lets them do it. We are required to have a legal posting board here, minutes here, and so forth. So in some cases, what you're really talking about is duplicating everything that we are doing. Now, it is a great service as it stands now, where that stuff can get on, but I think it's a complicated discussion of when you actually move from one to the other, or, as in the case of the mythical paper of the purpose, do you end up adding a requirement that everything is happening in duplicate, duplicate, and so forth? So you have to look at what the requirements are now.
I don't understand why anybody even has duplicate. You put, you post it on the computer, you email somebody, and you copy it to the office. I mean, it's so simple. It's so simple.
It is, when you say that, that, of course, it's so simple, but we have so many boards, it's nothing that is ever truly simple. And the one thing that David spoke to is, and technology is, in many ways, obviously we need to use it, it's the way to go. However, the word used is the resources to do that, and the resources means labor. And where is that gonna come from? Because this is the reality check of what I'm talking about, in reference to our jobs right now.
Is it a legal requirement, though?
Oh, no, the wooden board is a legal requirement.
And are there, of all the minutes?
Yes, the hard copy, yes, all of that is a legal requirement.
So we can't make it paperless, but...
No, you can't make it paperless.
Because the requirement is that it has to be posted out, and we have to have printed copies of all the minutes. But if there were, if it started electronically, and then things were printed out, then of course it would be better. But for example, in the case of the finance committee, I'm guessing that whoever called the meeting brought in a printed piece of paper that said, "This is the meeting notice", and it got posted on the board, and for that to actually end up, so we could have a requirement, but there's, who has the authority to order all of the chairs of all of the committees to submit their meeting notices electronically? I don't know if any of us do.
I think the select board does.
So, so if that's not gonna happen, then the person who submits the meeting notice may hand it to the clerk, because the clerk is responsible for the meetings, and then the clerk needs to have, take the time to then enter it electronically on the computer, which takes time.
No, it, I'm sorry, I understand what you're saying. You can say it takes five minutes, everything takes five minutes. I have worked 100 hours over my, a lot of time right now, and it's unpaid, and that is an unreasonable expectation to push on the position. And this is what happens at Maston Law Land, where I can see things happening in a minutia thing. Dog fees came up last year, it's on the agenda again this year, the dog fees are going to be broken down in a different way, that part of those fees are going to go back to the state. How is that gonna be managed internally in our offices? It has to happen. So while it seems like I'm pushing back, I am, with this fight. But we had this discussion for years.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, then I'm not in any way suggesting that Ann is, should be doing more of the same amount of time that she's getting paid.
And I understand, I understand that.
I personally see it as a whole extra step to get that out of mind. And then, David, does somebody have to have a key to get onto the internet to be able to change the site and to add these things?
Yes.
And you gotta entrust that to, I would imagine, a select few as well, right?
No, every, every chair, every committee, in theory, has an account on the website and a login, and they can submit in their form, or submitting their meeting notices. And some do that regularly and easily, and it is, it is an easy process, but some don't.
But for example, there's a little process here, we have a posting up front, if something comes up after the posting, you can go out and add it, time it, and date it. There's no way to do that there. If you make a mistake on the posting, what I do is I email Charlie, and he's great, but those are all steps, it's not, it's not something you control the way you control the way.
Rick. I spoke out of turn, and I apologize, but my answer's still no. It's very simple, I'm one of the volunteer committees, and I know it took four months for me to get my password, more than that one, after I knew I could get one, to go onto the internet. And I'm not going back and put on anything that occurred in that four months. Secondly, you're telling a private citizen who's volunteered to help the town that they now have to have a computer and a, and a, a cop. I'm sorry, that's a no. As a citizen, that is a no. I personally will do it, but I will not require anybody, member of my committee, my clerk, or anybody else to do that.
Mary, how has our chair customarily handled most of the arguments? Does he have access to the town website?
I believe he does, but he, as some others, just sends it in, we print it and post it out. Because again, this is the legal...
I think sometimes what happens, unfortunately, is it works beautifully, as if that most of the committees, it turns itself through, and if the system actually works. However, when it doesn't work, and there's a computer glitch, and you're happily hosting meetings, and it's on the website, and we're not receiving them, and they're not posted, and it has happened to us, you can't meet. And that happened in 2012 to a whole week of meetings. And I go, wait a minute, this cycle is broken, because I know when people are meeting, it's not working. And it was, it was a system, which can happen. So committees chairs get extremely frustrated, going like, no, I wanted to go where it needs to go, and I'm done. So you have that two-fold thing happening.
David, you're intending to...
Yeah. That's just item one.
Number two, that was our $900 part.
Yeah, that was the easy part.
So the, the next sections are related to discussions that occurred at a joint meeting of the select board and finance committee about six weeks ago, or two months ago, whatever, whenever it first came up. Some discussion, and Paul Swen was here, talking about what steps would be prudent in order to bring the town closer into compliance with electronic document management. And that laid out some proposals from Paul about various improvements that are needed that he recommended in town hall. And you, I think, I'm sure you all received, because it was a doc, it was a, it was a notice that was sent by...
Ron.
Ron, thank you. Which included a number of attachments, recommended scenarios for IT improvement, and so on, that was sent to both the finance committee and the select board. The technology committee then reviewed the proposals that Paul made, did some, although we're not complete, did some assessment of what the state of our IT system was here in town hall, and then broke that down into the three components that I've listed here, number two, number three, number four, because before, they were merged together, and generally we found that it was better to approach these issues separately. So number two refers to general improvements in the computer and networking infrastructure in town hall that are somewhat independent of other needs, but just represent general needs on an IT, from an IT perspective. For example, there's a switch in the basement that's small and full, and we can't, and we, the town really needs a larger one in order to add additional networked devices in town. The backup system is currently undersized, and also doesn't include automated backups on most of the computers. So most of the, the most important computers are, do have automated, they have the backups that are monitored, and that gets backed up off-site next door. But not all of them do, and we feel that it's proven that all of the computers have software installed, and that there's a backup system that automatically has the sufficient capacity to backup all those systems. That's included in this number two here, for $1,400 for backup system. And then, lastly, there's a schedule of, that lists the computers that are used in town with their recommended replacement dates that Paul, that shared. And our committee felt that there would be an opportunity to save some substantial money by doing some modest upgrades to those computers instead of replacing them fully. So while we are in support of the computers that were replaced, we, the money that we're suggesting for $1,100 for PC maintenance is basically putting in RAM upgrades on those machines that have small amounts of memory that are making them slow or difficult to use, which is relative to modest expense, and upgrading the Microsoft software on some of those computers, so that they can, with the larger amount of memory, they can run a more modern version of Microsoft Office, and then they can use, and then those machines can handle the modern document formats. So the committee suggested that expense has a way to, to improve the condition of the computers in town hall without the much larger expense in the next years of replacing them. Any other comments? I could go on to number three if you want.
Are we ready for three? Okay. Go ahead, David.
Number three is just that the police department has a very old server that is in desperate need of replacing, it's about, it's over 10 years old, I believe, and it has important documents on it. I don't know all of the details, but I've heard the chief, the chief tell me how critical this is, and I've looked at the specifications from the machine, and it is very old and underpowered.
So do you know if he put, or if anyone told me, did the chief include these improvements?
And that's what I spoke to before about...
What did he add? What didn't he add?
He didn't have that too.
Hold on.
He, he also had that on his budget last year to operate that server.
One thing we're gonna have to be careful about is, we're gonna have to comb through, because currently a lot of these expenditures are sublinated in the public department budgets.
Right, and I have to say, we, as a committee, don't have any visibility into the budgets and where the compliance items are. We just took as our task, we showed the recommendations and what were needed, and...
When you speak to number three, David, where you say limbs, PCD replaced, is that this one?
Yeah, that's, I believe, so two PCs have arrived. I haven't talked with Paul recently, but A, he told me that they were, he believed that they were scheduled to replace limbs and hands, and I'm not sure if they've been set up yet or not, but Paul...
How was your computer?
It's in the box.
Oh, that was your one?
That's over, yeah, so limbs, limbs and hands have been replaced.
Oh.
And so, sorry, if I wasn't clear about this. And the one computer that still needs replacement is the police department computer.
I'm not, I'm not saying that police budget request will come out for here.
So the lens has already been replaced, I was at P4.
Last year's budget.
Last year's budget, or this year's budget.
Well, yeah, current year.
Okay.
So the $2,000 basically would be for the chief's server.
That's my understanding, David.
I have a question, I was trying to say, I believe the meeting that this whole bad meeting in February, there was some thought that the server that the assessor had stopped using might be usable somewhere, or we'll have to change to look at whether that's just a lot of work to put in, replace, and then replace it next year. I seem to remember that conversation.
I don't know. We could look into it, but we'd be happy to, but...
Server, the whole town hall, can, can you do one for the whole town hall, and the rest be wireless? Does that matter? I mean, Paul was saying, yeah.
I don't know if the police department is different, we're kinda new on some of this stuff, so you can't say. But there certainly is a recommendation that there could be a single server machine, or the rest is town hall for sure.
The rest outside of the police department?
Yes.
Because I thought that Paul, when he was here, was saying that this one server could do it in town hall.
I'd be happy to look into this a little, we, sorry, I would be happy to volunteer us to look into it.
I think Paul had a little...
Was that?
I'm sure Paul knows.
Hey, he did talk about how there could be some secure, things could be set up securely, but I, it's not, it's not clear to me whether the server in the police department that needs replacing, it has some special, has a special database on it that's distinct from the need for a file server or things like that.
But you believe that $2,000 is sufficient to secure a server for the police department?
I do believe that, yes.
And then, it says limbs, PC to be replaced, but it's your path one, or?
It's in the box.
Right, so that's...
They're already gone, that's all.
That's, that's why I'm sort of saying, that's off the list now, because it's been taken care of.
But just so you know, $2,000, the other piece, is that...
Right, $2,000, that's covered for the police department.
Okay, so you're still looking at $2,000.
Right, sorry, it would've been more if we needed to buy two.
Any more questions on part three here? Comments? I do, now, this is like at fireworks, this is the grand finale, right, number four?
Maybe, maybe, but, so, actually, I don't know about fireworks. All I can say is that, you know, the main thrust behind our discussions at the beginning of February was how the town's IT systems could be improved to better ensure electronic document management compliance, as well as proactively, or maybe not proactively, reactively respond to the demands for public documents, and imagine a system that allowed us to serve those documents more efficiently. The main issue or the latter concern is that we, if there was a centralized location for all emails, any documents for various committees, and various concerns within town hall, instead of on separate machines, or potentially even on individual computers in individuals' homes, then it would be a more straightforward process for an administrator to cull through various documents and pull out those that met a certain search criteria. The, the first issue in terms of compliance is that the state has very detailed, detailed requirements on how the town is supposed to manage its electronic documents in terms of its backup policies, document retention schedules, and so on, that it's really not designed for a small town like ourselves. You know, imagines that there are individuals who establish detailed policies of document management and so on, and we're not really in a position today to deal with, but we could move forward... and we're not really in a position today to deal with, but we could move forward in some respects on that by establishing policies and adopting a system that allows us to do that more, do some of that more easily. And so, there are really, the way we see this, there are two possible systems, main types of systems. One of them is to have a specific piece of hardware, a Windows server, that, and instead of the individual desks, desktops essentially working more or less autonomously, their, all their files, their, their disk drives essentially would all be mapped onto this central machine and would allow, and that would allow us to do, easily do some unified backups and also go through and, we could theoretically have a unified email system there and so on that would create a central location where we could adopt the state guidelines essentially just on that machine. The alternative is to have a cloud, what we call a cloud-based system. And that's where all of the documents that are on the individual computers and in the office, those documents instead are located on a networked device that is on the internet outside of Town Hall and is hosted by a company that specializes in doing this sort of thing. And that, and our committee believes that there are some significant advantages of doing that in terms of integration of mail and documents as well as facilitating easy sharing of documents with the public as, for either comment or viewing as needed in the future. But it would be a big step to take because it would require resources in terms, either, either of these solutions would require both human resources as well as cross-divine systems or licenses, but, you know, there would be, we would have to establish policies and there would have to be training on how to use some, a system. So, for example, I'll stop talking in a minute, but for example, if we used Google, Google Apps for Business, which is a common cloud solution that's used by a lot of companies as well as nonprofits and government and so on, there would be, they provide a system where the documents on a computer are automatically mirrored on a remote system and then can be accessible through the network. But it also integrates the email system that we already use. Asheville.org already uses Google for mail. And so, the user IDs that are used for accessing email can also be used to authenticate and access documents that each of us, and that each town employee has access to. And it also would provide simple facilities for those committees who would be interested. Any committee participant who also had a Google account could collapse, could either share documents into a common folder used by a committee. There could be collaborative editing of documents in which there was good revision control systems which would identify exactly who edited which in a proposal that might be being drafted, say, with the planning board or something like that. That sort of thing could be done very easily between individuals in Town Hall as well as volunteer participants outside of the town, either using their own computers or using the computer systems here and in town. So, there are some potential big advantages in terms of transparency, openness, sharing, potential efficiencies of document management and so on if we used a cloud-based system. But it has complicated costs, of course, as put...
Just one quick comment, you mentioned some of the editing, you know, editing. One of the things we'd have to look at is some of that would fall outside open meeting law.
Of course.
Or it's, you can't edit between or suggest changes, that sort of thing, so...
Right, so, right, we have to look at what, what is allowed. One of the things that this particular system allows is that an individual can offer a document and then others can go in and add comments which are not actually edited in the document, but essentially allows for public review, which is, may not be considered deliberation, but may be, may facilitate meetings when individuals come back together and are able to see how everybody has commented on the document. And it could be completely public and open, but we'd have to check on what the legalities are. But one other issue that's worth noting in terms of compliance is that Google actually has something specific just for compliance issues called Google Vault. And that is a system in which, among other things, emails cannot be immediately deleted, but they have, they have a lifetime in which after the individual deletes the email, for example, then it doesn't get deleted until a prescribed amount of time that's based on policies that have to do with following the guidelines for compliance. And in addition, you can freeze accounts so that nothing can change. If, for example, there's a court order or something, or a request, then you can just make sure that nothing's changed because the accounts get essentially frozen. And there are facilities within that that allow you to do broad searching for keywords across all accounts, usually this is for findings and things like that based on legal requirements. But that exists for this, this cloud-based system.
Going with the spotlight here, as it were, it sounds like this is gonna have to be work in progress in terms of requiring both operating and capital well by anybody operating or any personnel.
Right, I think in terms of, I think training would be the biggest one and then the time among staff to learn how to do it. And I don't, I, I think there are definitely ways that this can evolve with relatively little disruption. For example, all the files on an individual's computer can just be put on what's called Google Drive and then they all end up on, on our Asheville.org private cloud.
I have one question, which is in relation to restricted records, how would that be handled?
It would be the same, by default, all of these documents that are on the cloud are just as accessible as your local computer in terms of authentication. They're not by default accessible by anybody except for the individual that owns that computer and has that account. So, by default, everything is private. But there are very simple mechanisms for making them shareable either within the town, within the Asheville.org domain, or shareable more widely. There are facilities to do that, but by default, all private documents are private.
I have a question, obviously, going in this direction has certain appeal, but would also be, have certain, you know, certain costs. Are we compelled by the open meeting law and the, these compliance rules? Do we have to do this eventually? Or can we just live in the land of paper indefinitely?
In fact, we could live exclusively in the land of paper. And our legal counsel has even discussed that suggestion that everything simply gets printed out and nothing is retained in electronic form to avoid the difficulties of managing electronic documents. It seems like an untenable direction to go, and so if we're going to have electronic documents, it seems like we should have a reasonable system for managing them. We have a reasonable system for managing them and we should probably embrace it fully. And that's where we end up with something like a cloud-based system or a server system.
So, just to kind of break it down, so you're recommending the cloud versus the server? And then, do you have any numbers that kind of put with the tool?
So, I want to clarify, as I mentioned, our committee has not come up with a definitive recommendation because we feel that there are a number of variables that we're not sure of yet. But generally, I, I can say in our discussions that we find the cloud-based system preferable. And the costs, the, right now, you could use, for example, we could use Google Apps almost for free. Right now, we use it for free and we have up to fifty units. So, in terms of the outlay for purchasing the service, it would, it would not cost a lot for it. And in the extreme situation, if we wanted additional services that Google doesn't provide with our free setup, or we wanted to add more accounts, it would be between, it would, it would be a fair amount, it would be around sixty dollars per account per year. So, let's say there's about ten major accounts that would be used. And so, you know, we're talking, you know, on the order of maybe six hundred thousand dollars or more possibly on an annual basis for the cloud system. I would say that the bulk of that money, I would say that the bulk of the expense really would not be in the purchase of the cloud system, but in the upfront costs that might be required for learning to use it effectively.
And I second that idea, so we definitely wouldn't have to get the seven thousand dollar server, correct, is what you're saying? So, by going to the cloud, we could eliminate the seven thousand dollars which we're requesting for just going to the cloud?
That's right, but it's not clear that the money is so straightforward, right? But if there's an issue, you know, do we need to do something this year? And would be, do we have the money to spend seven thousand dollars on a server plus the various consulting and training versus very little on a cloud-based system and the consulting and training? Maybe it's worth the cloud-based system, but the ongoing expenses, you know, maybe more on the following years on the cloud-based system. So, it might even out after five years or something, but we're not sure about that and we'd like to take some more time to figure that out.
And what about the police department? Would they also be able to use the cloud or are they gonna be under another restriction?
We don't know.
I just, when you estimated, say, ten accounts, can you describe what would constitute an account?
It's the same as what it is right now, so like town clerk, adding assistant, you know, assistant, town clerk, et cetera, et cetera, all have accounts currently. In addition, we recommend that every committee chair would have an account which would facilitate the document management for those committees if they're willing to participate. And that would be, that would be it.
What about, sorry, for their town departments, say, highway?
Yeah, each one of those would have their own account, which they already do.
Right, I, I guess what I'm thinking, and I wasn't sure if I understood accounts, is we're probably talking about maybe a lot more than ten accounts?
I'm, maybe, right now, we have twenty-seven accounts. Many of those aren't currently used and could probably be recycled. And some of those are things like select board or, which are really don't need to be accounts, they can just be what are called email aliases. So, they're, I, I think, you know, more than twenty, I don't think.
I just want to say that given the kind of obstacles we face getting people to use the website, I just, I'm concerned that people are gonna not want to participate or be able to or...
Yeah.
Paul.
Dave, number five on your list, is, is that tied to number four? Because I'm in a position that right now the select board can't meet. And I've turned in some documents to the chair of the finance committee to share with the technology committee and the finance committee. I have copies for the select board at our next meeting. I may have the date wrong, but after the meeting, we all did a call that we all went a half ago, I came back to the select board and I gave a verbal proposal of some things we could do. It may not be a hundred percent exactly as you're viewing the world, the detail, but the concepts, I think, are the same in terms of offering some assistance, manual labor to jumpstart some of this and get stuff up and going maybe that.
Right.
So, I made copies for your, I think that there's not copies there, if not, I've got some extra. So, I just wanted to share that because at our select board meeting it was determined to send some of what I was proposing for this meeting.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on point four?
I just have one question, are we talking mainly about emails or all documents?
It would potentially provide all documents. It would provide a central location for the storage of all Town Hall documents, which would facilitate a simplified backup as well as document retrieval needs that we might be, might have for both regular tasks that are, that you do on a daily basis as well as extraordinary tasks in terms of requests for information or something.
That would make it more easily accessible to the public in terms of, because I think the email portion of it is really a wonderful thing because of that particular request that you made to see, that would make it easier to manage.
That's right.
More questions or comments, correct?
I would request that the technology really, and for Anderson, Paul, look into state law requirements for, say, the treasurer's documents. And the police, I know, have a very special program they're required to use. It's updated every so many months. That not, might not be too deep. And that definitely has to be a very carefully guarded account. Having been violated on the state level personally, where information was stolen and I had to go through the courts to get it straightened out, I'm very leery of this cloud-based system. My wife's data was stolen off the state accounts twice, which means that we were subject to that so-called loss of privacy. As a nurse, that wasn't very good. Some of our credit accounts were attacked and that was all done through the state. I get very leery of this. I wouldn't, I wouldn't participate on that type of system, but there's parts of it that really make me nervous.
Further comments? Maybe there's more you want to share on the fifth and last point?
Fifth and last point came up, we, the committee hasn't had a chance to discuss telecommunications expenses and I don't know in the budget what is currently budgeting for telephone and internet. But I felt it was important to bring to the finance committee's attention that the fiber optic network has been attached, the wires that have been brought into the basement of Town Hall here have the potential for providing Town Hall and anybody, potentially could even be shared with anybody in town, access to high-speed fiber optic network. But the town would need to buy internet service, you know, a monthly subscription for internet service in the same way that you at home have a monthly cost and the town currently has a monthly cost for DSL or satellite or whatever. And the ballpark estimates that I've seen are that for a, for businesses, this would be about two hundred dollars a month for a ten megabit per second connection, which is apparently the minimum that would be offered for fiber, which is very fast. Certainly would facilitate the cloud-based activities if we adopted that. But it's something to consider because otherwise, I'm not suggesting that we have to subscribe to the fiber optic system, but if we don't, then there'll be a, a big fat pipe in the basement that we're not actually taking advantage of.
You comment here, and I quote, "The committee does not, does not currently have budget recommendations, but for the current planning purposes..." recommendations, but for the current planning purposes, recommend that the select board budget 2,400."
Is it 2,400 because $200 a month?
Four fifteen fiscal 14.
That's, that's right.
Isn't this thing over there, is that the budget numbers here?
It's 4,200, whether it's phone or internet right now.
So we're at 4,200 now for internet?
And so that 2,400 would be instead of the 4,200?
No, it would, that's, should be part of it because I would have to look at the details, but 4,200 would include both our DSL costs and our telephone costs. And so the DSL cost would go away and then we would have the telephone costs. Telephone could be provided perhaps very cost-effectively through the same internet service provider. That's one of the big benefits that towns generally realize is that the phone lines that they're currently, even the separate phone lines that the town has to maintain can be done more cost-effectively using a voice-over-IP system that would be available through the fiber optic system. So it may be the case, ultimately, if we got quotes from some of these vendors, that the total cost of our telecommunications would not be any greater than what it is today. But I'm just letting you all know that internet would be about 2,400.
And I guess we looked up, we checked about 50,000, correct?
Or...
The internet portion.
Scattered, scattered, yes.
So we checked that today.
Yeah. One, one thing that Mary and I talked about today was that we don't know if we'd want to establish for at least a few of these proposed expenditures, separate property budget lines. Others perhaps would remain within your departmental budgets, I suppose, such as police.
We talked about whether to try to make an adjustment, yeah, and figure out quite there in terms of...
And I know regional school budgets and school budgets have, you know, as IT costs become more substantial, the budget becomes sort of a budget cluster of its own. I would caution against adding it to a department's budget if it's a long-term item because that inflates that budget on that department and then the next year, they might be looking to re-spend that money.
What we were talking about is some, some of what's addressed here is currently built into budgets.
Okay.
We didn't necessarily plug in these numbers on the line without some discussion and then also without, you know, where some of that would come out of other budgets. We didn't have it in both places and I guess that would take some time.
In the end, my, myself, my service online, if we look that way, move that way. Okay. I guess it was, you know, it'll still all be under general cover, but well, again, the police department and other departments. Thank you, David, and members of the...
I just wanted to say quickly, you know, we're a brand-new committee and a lot of this information is inconclusive, as David has alluded. So in your process, I know that this kind of uncertainty would make, it makes your job harder. I'm just wondering if there's some way that we could come back, you know, in another month with more definite numbers and, you know, if that would be...
That would definitely be welcome. Yes.
Do we have a month? Do we have a month?
We don't have a month for this part of the process.
Well, I know, that's why maybe there's like, I don't know how it works, but if there's like a, you know, sort of an estimated budget, I mean, in a sense, that's what David has proposed, is an estimated budget.
Mr. Carter. In the past, I've always gone to the theory that the key word in all of this process is budget. Okay? You set a budget. You try to, you try to throw that there, you have to get as close to the center as you can. You can't do that all the time. So it's a work in progress. That would be, that would be my opinion, is that you put a amount of money in there, you know you're going to work towards it, is it going to be a little more, a little less, sometimes you just don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Again, thanks to members of the technology committee. Thank you for your hard work and good work. We meet again at seven o'clock. Mr. Carter.
Are you going to have any time for public input or discussion?
Right.
Because I had some.
Right.
I wonder why you were so quiet.
I could, we're saving for the next meeting.
We thought we'd been talking all along.
I just, I was just, I have a bad habit for punching some numbers here, so feel free to take some notes.
Go for it.
If you take this budget sheet that Mary made dated 3/20, and I've checked the numbers in several different ways, and they seem to come out pretty close to right, you've got a total budget on that sheet, that's using the fiscal year 14 department request column, a total budget of $3,938,620. I subtracted out of that $3,000 for the reserve fund. I didn't subtract it out, what I did is I marked that, that maybe that would come from free cash. Then I took out $272,257 away from that, that's the debt exclusion, that's the school,
That's current, approved.
Dead, dead excluded. I double-checked the math, I went back and forth, that includes the school and what is debt exclusions. Then, because there's $23,820 of debt service that isn't excluded, okay? So that leaves $3,663,363 that we could raise and appropriate.
So that number?
Then I started to do a little rounding. And what we can legally raise and appropriate using these numbers is $3,707. So there's about $44,000 in that 3/20, in this line, before we made any changes that we may or may not make, or you may or may not make tonight. You had $44,000 before you hit the levy. The only outside funds in my calculation at this point was at $3,000. So that just gives you an idea. Tonight, when we came in, there's about $44,000 left before you start tapping into free cash, stabilization, Fred Cross, or any of those other funds. Tonight, I mean, for discussion, that office staff, I had time here, nothing else to do tonight, comes to about $18,200. If we went with the suggestions that the Town Hall offices have, give you, I just kind of plugged in $10,000 for IT, so that's an easy number to count. Some of the other things I add, I added in 4,000, there's a $4,000 budget line for Tree Warden. I added $4,000 more to that, just to say that I understand that they may need more. I was at a meeting Monday night where we talked about $10,000 or $12,000 and exactly where we're going to get it, I'm not sure, but to get this basement cleaned out so they can run wires and insulate and do that sort of thing. Not exactly sure where that's going to come from.
$10,000 or $12,000.
$10,000 or $12,000. I put $12,000 in. $20,000 probably wouldn't put much of a dent in, in what needs to be done to maintain the dam, really. $20,000 might be a half higher than $10,000, maybe. I'm not exactly sure, but I'm just trying to bring the finance committee up to date in the big picture. And we have a problem with a retaining wall down on Bronson Avenue that's holding back, it's on town hall land off of neighbors. I have no idea what that's going to cost, but I plugged $10,000 into that. So that's $74,000. And we haven't talked about the police department or the grader or any of that sort of stuff. So we had $44,000. These other numbers need to be kicked around and refined, but I think we're narrowing it down, I would think. We can feel good we're not talking about 115 lines anymore, maybe we're only talking about 20. But I just, I wanted to share that with you to give you something, to give you nightmares over the next week before you get a chance to meet again.
We, we are, in my opinion, not as crunched as I thought we were going to be. But we'll say that discussion is worth a visit.
Well, I don't know if we need to save a whole lot, David. I mean, you know, we've got a few minutes before 10 o'clock, I hate to see anybody leave early. The, you know, we're not as crunched as maybe we are, but we're certainly not flush when you look at some of the liabilities that we've already, that we've already talked about.
You haven't mentioned strengthening our stabilization, which is something I think we ought to do.
Or paying off the loan from Hurricane Irene, the $200,000 loan for Hurricane Irene. And there was discussion Monday night on, on this grader about where to go on that. And although there was no vote, there was consensus, a consensus that a debt exclusion question should be put on the ballot. But I guess I, in particular, was looking for some feedback from the finance committee on where they thought they should go on that.
It was not until...
Today?
This afternoon, I became aware of that, that that exclusion was being considered. I don't think it's a simple up and down, one way or another, I think we need to have that discussion. I think you need to be supportive, you need to do. But I, I'm always of the kind of belief that the various shades of gray, and one of those various shades of gray could be the amount of...
Well, I believe that if we move forward with a debt exclusion, that what would be on the ballot would be just authorization to ask for a debt exclusion for the purpose of purchasing, not no dollar value to that. The dollar value would be out in the town meeting room.
Yeah.
So...
But I think we certainly do want to have a little bit of understanding as to what we're talking about.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. The, the big reason for this discussion would be that the, the town clerk needs to get information...
I understand, yes.
Quickly to, which would, which would be a week from today.
I'm only speaking for myself here, the committee has not had an opportunity to discuss this. But I, I think, what I hope the board will consider and what I think we need to consider in our conversation is the risks and rewards of doing it now versus deferring it for one year. That's one thing I recommend that we talk about, what are the risks and rewards for those two timing options? Beyond that, are there options for procurement? How much do you really need to spend on that? That's what I think will outline our discussion. I have, I see no problem with the board acting on it on Monday. I think it's good to have it ready to go.
Well, my understanding is it's 100% the board's, the, the select board's decision to place it.
Yes.
Certainly, if any of you wanted to speak to any of those people on the select board, certainly, I'm sure, I'm sure it would be welcome.
We'll do it in open media.
Well, I mean, even individually, because I, I believe that a decision should be made Monday night by the select.
You can always change your nine, once you have it free. But, no, vote, have it on Monday and know that, as we'll be meeting jointly, hopefully next week.
Do we have next week?
It'll be on our agenda.
Maybe it's Monday?
Yeah.
Well, and there's no reason why I have to make the select.
We've seen that before, too.
That's, that's the reason you're there.
Do we want to...
Now, the meeting is posted and we will, I will prepare an agenda and I will see to it that the paper posting is self-painted to indicate what we have agreed we're going to discuss and this matter is on the agenda. Anything for anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Carter. You are welcome.
Did you make your swag?
No, I didn't.
Anything to motion, adjourned?
I have to say, I can't do it, I don't know where it originated.